Sound check, Chris, can you hear me okay? Chris, can you hear me?
Adrian, Joe, I can hear you.
There we go. Um, I can't hear Chris if you're talking. But Joe, I can hear you.
Okay, cool.
Chris, still waiting for confirmation, can you hear me now? Trying again, Chris, can you hear me now? Kyle, can you hear me, this is Adrian.
Adrian, this is Laura Lee, I can hear you.
Oh, hi, okay, thank you. Brad, it's Adrian, can you hear me? Okay, I just can't hear you.
Sound check, if you're remote, can you let us know if you can hear us?
Chris, I can hear you now.
Thank you, Adrian.
Chris, I can hear you now.
Thank you, Adrian.
Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record, it is August 10th at 4:35 PM, we will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden.
Sure.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Sure.
Councilwoman Peru. Councilman Hoagland.
Sure.
Councilman Burnt. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Very proud for the opportunity to adopt the agenda this evening with no changes as published.
I can the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted, next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Proud for the opportunity this evening to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so the next thing up will be our department commission reports. Item 20, which is from our community development department, cost share agreements for landscaped center medians, and turn this over to Miranda.
Good evening, council, mayor. It's kind of nice to actually be able to stand in front of you for once, instead of just being behind a computer screen, that's exciting. So, the memo in your packet is for, ACHD is designing the widening of Eagle between Lake Hazel and Amity from two, three lanes to five lanes with curb gutter and a multi-use pathway, there's also a roundabout included at Taconic. Per standard, when we are working with ACHD, we submit a cost share application for road projects. And this is just an application that gets the ball rolling, it's not the full agreement, and it's just saying what we're thinking we will agree to down the road when we get there. So we'll still have some negotiations about the agreement. So there are some standard requests in the cost share application that's in your packet, those include the detached sidewalks pathway, consideration for a 10-mile pathway, conduit junction boxes, and landscaping along the county parcels and permanent landscaping already in city limits. So in addition to those standard requests, the thing I really wanted to bring to you tonight was a request for landscaped center medians. So, ACHD indicated in the 30% design meeting that their commission is now has a preference for landscaped center medians if they can get a local partner to maintain those. So, in your memo, there is a discrepancy, there was miscommunication on what that partnership would look like when we first started having conversations with ACHD. ACHD has since said that they are not willing to pay for the amenity, but rather they would have the city be responsible to cover the costs for design, material installation, and maintenance. So with that in mind, if council is interested in seeing landscaped medians along this stretch, the one-time cost that Parks has estimated to pay for the design materials and installation is 175,000, and the maintenance cost is around 15,000 per year. Please note that those costs do not include the improvements to the roundabout, this is just the center medians that bringing before you. This was a request from the ACHD commission that went down to their staff and then came to our staff and is now coming back up to you. So the direction that I'm looking for from council is if you're interested in seeing center medians along this roadway, knowing the costs, and then also if this is something that you would like included in future cost share applications as a standard, or if it's something that you would like us to bring forward at each request from ACHD. And with that all, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Miranda. Councilman Burnt.
Thank you, Miranda, for your presentation, I just have a question or two. What has been the agreement in the past, not only with us, but with other municipalities with regard to this cost share?
So typically in past cost shares, we've had the things, we've had the agreements for the sidewalks, the consideration for pathways, conduit and junction boxes for fiber and irrigation, and then landscaping along county parcels, and then we ask for interim landscaping on county parcels and we ask for permanent landscaping where we're already in city limits. And that's because along the county parcels, we can then ask developers to put in the landscaping when they come in to be annexed. So those are the typical requests and those are included in this. As far as the landscaped medians, I'm not aware of any precedent with the city of Meridian having those in the past. We've, or actually, I think we do, we have some along 10-mile right now. Sorry, I misspoke, so, but I wasn't a part of those cost share applications, so I'm not exactly sure what those looked like as far as who funded what. ACHD actually just told us today that they weren't going to be covering the costs for insulation, so that's, don't have a lot of information because that just came to me a couple hours ago. We can look at what those past agreements looked like. I know in other ones where we have the center medians, it's, we have examples where it's just concrete center medians.
Councilwoman Peru.
So, do we have the option of doing this on a case-by-case basis depending on location?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not something that once we down that road that we have to do?
Yes, councilwoman.
Okay, is that better? And so this is a brand-new request, that, an agreement that we have not made with ACHD in the past.
Yes, yes, councilwoman. And we can, I can, community development, when I say we, can bring the request forward every time, if it's something city council would like to consider on a case-by-case basis. We can say, as a standard, we want, when I say we, I mean, city council can say as a standard, we want landscaped medians and we understand the costs. It's at the discretion of the council how you want to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilwoman Peru.
What is the alternative if we decide not to do landscaping, is it just the brick, the red brick that they typically put in, the medians, the safety, I don't know what the terminology is for them, but essentially you see it all along Eagle Road.
Yes.
What that would look like?
Yes, councilwoman Peru, if we decide that we don't want to partner with ACHD for the landscaping, then they have indicated in the past that they will default to the concrete.
Thank you.
Well, now, because most arterial roadways don't have anything in the middle of them, so are they wanting to go that direction on all arterials and putting in barriers?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yes, so that was the staff, ACHD staff had told us that their commission had a new preference for landscaped center medians if we wanted to partner with them on that.
And I understand that, I guess if we don't do landscape though, but if you look at Eustick, there's no medians on Eustick whatsoever, so would there just be vacant? Or would they, do they plan on putting in medians with or without a median of any sort?
So.
Is that a new preference?
Mr. Mayor, they, as you should be able to see there on your screen, is the 30% design. So of course we know that ACHD can change their design all the way up to the 100%, but at this point, they're at the 30% design and their 30% design does include the concrete medians, and they're looking to see if we want to go forward with including the landscape medians. So, indications right now is that they will do concrete medians unless we ask for the landscape medians that they asked us to ask.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I'd follow up on your point, I can see Miranda on the graphic here where it shows concrete medians and then you have the line limit of concrete and then the landscape area, and that's getting into the intense traffic area. So I mean, it's kind of problematic to a degree where you have, you know, a roundabout and the height of that landscape, he's gonna have to be pretty low because people need to see who's coming, who's turning, that sort of thing, so. Yeah, I little concerned, just to figure out what the cost would be for that. And it might be a type of thing that we can come up with something that Parks goes, yeah, here's the material, this looks good, it doesn't interfere, but at the same time, it's always a cost of those types of things. And if we end up with how many of these roundabouts throughout the city just adds to that, so. Just starting down this path is kind of, you know.
Councilwoman Hoagland, this is not a request for the landscaped median, this is, that would be a separate request through Parks and an agreement with ACHD. This is just, ACHD asked us if we wanted to do landscaped center medians and as a staff, because that was a new thing for the city of Meridian, we determined that we should bring it to council and let council decide how we should proceed.
Councilman Holden.
To that point then, Miranda, I think we need to kind of know the long-term implications, is it gonna be every, you know, roundabout and medians like that? How many would there be, what does that landscaping look like, I mean, there's a whole host of questions before I commit to anything along those lines that I want to find out, so. And I'm sure Mike is well-versed in that, having been involved with others before, and Miranda can, anyway, he's pointing to you, Miranda.
Okay.
It's all on you now.
Councilwoman Hoagland, so there would be some brush, some grass, likely some conflicts, like you said, with vehicles. There have been conflicts in the past with vehicles driving over the center median and the maintenance of those. That's something that Parks manages, the maintenance of those center medians, so it looks like he's gonna back me up here, so I'm gonna hand it over to Mike.
Mr. Mayor and council, so two things. ACHD has never, never paid for non-transportation components, so if the city desires greenery in a median or a, I have a problem. So if, if greenery is required similar to like Meridian Road interchange, we paid for that landscape. And 10-mile interchange, we paid for that landscaping to go in, and we maintain it. So this is consistent with what we've done in the past, they don't pay for non-transportation components. And, you know, for the greenery and the design, typically, we would put in like a black and tan rock with just low-growing perennials and, you know, colorful items that bloom seasonally. Everything needs to be below that 24-inch mark or 18 inches for visibility. And I think Miranda kind of categories, categorized it correctly, that if the greenery doesn't go in, that ACHD is likely to fill it with concrete. And we know that the concrete is, and I'm not trying to sell it by any means, but the concrete traps road sand and it's weeds in the cracks and it's not very attractive, but you know, as an option to consider, maybe there's, I think, 3,000 feet of medians in this current design and for a couple of maybe splashes of color or access management, if they wanted to go that route, I'm not 100% sure that we need 3,000 feet of color there and that something scaled back might be appropriate.
Mike, just a question for you, I said Overland Road where we have the medians that are unlandscaped at this time, what is the, is that envisioned to be landscaped by the city and maintained at some point in time, I can't remember back that far, maybe Mr. Borden remembers, but I do not.
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question. There, my understanding of that one that's currently unlandscaped, that that was going to fall to the developer to provide the landscaping for that, and then something happened or changed hands or the type, during the entitlement process, I think that fell through. But that's one of those, the 10-mile, the medians south of 10-mile interchange were unlandscaped when they went in and the city had a project, we did, to landscape those medians. And that was, I think, one or two years after the fact because it was, just remained dirt.
Council, just two cents from myself on this is, I think that these can be nice if they're done in a corridor where you anticipate it. I don't know the value and benefit of putting one in at this location right here, when you look at the rest of Eagle Road where you've already, you know, the next mile up, which is also in there's a roundabout, they have not done this type of treatment to it, you know, so it just seems kind of odd, like, let's just go put a mile of curb and that into this next mile, which is no different than the other mile. If you want to look at corridors where council thinks it would make more sense long-term, for example, Locust Grove from Overland Down has not been improved yet. That's a corridor, if you say, okay, a two-lane road corridors that are yet to be built, maybe Black Cat, which has yet to be built, those would be corridors where a treatment like this might make sense as compared to just one, especially for the cost, I'm actually a little surprised that ACHD is putting in the medians when we don't have medians like this in any other road section and that's just costs and our, that agency is struggling with coming up with costs to build roads. Medians may be safer, but it's, I look at this and I struggle and I'd rather see the city put $170,000 in towards getting roads built or pathways built than greening up medians in this one-mile section of this specific roadway. Even from an investment standpoint, you have the red brick that's out there on some of the interchanges, it's just stamped concrete. The ITD did, I think that we helped fund some of that stat, you know, some of those determinations on the stamped concrete. If we want a visual difference rather than just, than the that, that's a pretty minor cost. But there's my two cents where generally I cannot, I'm not supportive of this despite the roundabout entering. If you had another mile was part of it, maybe it would be different to me, but not just this one-mile section.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Your point, I remember accurately the discussion about 10-mile way back when in the day. That was an entryway to our city, coming off the freeway and there was a very legitimate reason to landscape it and make it look good. I guess it's a matter of what are those key intersections that we would go, yes, these would be designated, you know, we could, should landscape those because of the key points, but others, you don't, and not to have a hit and miss type of thing, so. I don't know what those are, Miranda, if you're trying to decipher, I mean, this is something we have to process, for me anyway, I have to process this and think about that. I mean, this is something we have to process, for, for me anyway, I have to process this and think about that. What, what, what is the key components to make that one landscape versus one that's, that's not landscape? In all of this, of course, we can't do it, we're going to need irrigation for any place that we landscape, so that's, that's a big part of the cost and, and that adds to it. And of course, someone drives up on it, breaks a pipe like we've seen 10 Mile and, and you got a geyser when it's going off really in the morning, so. It is what it is, so, yeah, just, just having something that's understandable and we can, we can make those decisions on what intersections they are and the reasons why and there's that process in place makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Miranda, thanks. I think it's important to pass on our thanks and appreciation to ACHD for even, for asking the question. I think that's a, that's a big pivot for them. I tend to agree with the comments from Mayor and Councilwoman Hoagland. I don't think this particular intersection makes sense, but I'm really looking forward to having these future requests come before us. I think that it's a good conversation for us as these projects merge. I think the mayor touched on Black Cat, Locust Grove to me seemed to be more of a better fit for this type of an approach than maybe this particular intersection. Although had we been asked five years ago about Eagle, it could have been in potentially different conversations, so. I appreciate being asked, I just don't think that this is the right thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borden.
Todd. I, I tend to agree. Each one is to be uniquely considered. I understood today's request still is just asking to approve the application that's presented, the draft application for the cost share. And I think it's a separate discussion as to when and how we treat the medians throughout the city. Is that right?
That is correct, Councilwoman. So I was looking for clarification on what you wanted brought to you, so I have that. Going forward, we'll bring these requests to you on a case-by-case basis with, and have this kind of open discussion. This has been very helpful to me. And then on this particular cost share application, I will remove the landscape center medians and go forward with just the standard request if that's what council is comfortable with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mark.
And I understood that would be because if you included in this application, let's landscape the medians, ACHD has preemptively told you, don't even bother, because that part of the request will not be funded. Is that correct?
Correct. If we put in, let's landscape the medians, we're, we're saying with the cost share application, these are the non-transportation components that we want to share the cost with you on. So if we don't put landscape medians in, then we're saying we're not going to share the cost on landscape medians. If ACHD turns around and decides they want to put in landscape medians, okay, that's good for them, but we didn't say we would share the cost on that. And then we'll come back later with a cost share agreement that we'll ask council to approve and that's the, the actual agreement. This is like an application to say what we want that agreement to include.
For all the other stuff.
For all the other stuff. Anything non-transportation related.
And it's, it sounds like ACHD has said, don't request to cost share medians. Whether you want them or not, we're just telling you right now, that part of a cost share agreement will never be.
They won't agree to fund the whole landscape to median. So if we want landscape medians, we need to include it and include the caveat that we're going to pay for it.
Except for they, they will put in the landscape median, they just want us to pay for the landscaping.
They will put in the median with concrete. They want us to pay for the design, installation, materials and maintenance if it will have landscaping. And when I say landscaping, I mean that greenery, so they'll put in concrete.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mark.
Part of that future discussion, and it came up in 10 Mile way back because among the challenges is parking our, our equipment along the road to maintain it. And so we talked about the pro-con pricing and long-term of turf. If there was any grass, be any component of it, maybe there's not, but turf was discussed back then.
I, this isn't a situation where I would plant grass. I mean, it's attractive and low-growing and it meets those, kind of checks those boxes, but the maintenance aspect is something that I wouldn't do. That weekly thing, I mean, you want to go in there every couple of weeks and pick up trash and then every few months to do some trimming.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, I have concerns about committing specifically on this proposal at, at, at that suggested cost, committing that significant amount to this. I, I think it's, it just seems inconsistent to put it in one residential area of the city when we haven't already done that in other areas of the city. I'm not in opposition to having that conversation about higher traffic areas, like 10 Mile Interchange. But I do hope they continue to come back and, and offer us this opportunity case by case and not assume that rejection of this, of this one possibility is indication of decisions we'll make in the future.
Councilwoman Pearl, when I go back and let them know that we're going to opt out on this project, I'll make sure that they know that that doesn't mean we're opting out on all future projects.
Who maintains the concrete medians now on Eagle Road? Is it the state or is it ACHD?
The state.
So Eagle Road would be ITD.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
A lot of them are unmaintained or poorly maintained. Has there ever been a consideration by the city to commit resources to maintain those? I don't think the state would care if we went in and did that on a regular basis just for the sake of keeping the city appearing clean and nice as we have all over.
I'm not aware that we've ever made that option to do that.
Typically, in the past, Councilwoman, when there's a concern with landscaping in any location, we go to code enforcement and they contact ITD or the property owner, whoever the responsible party is, and it gets taken care of. So if, if you see those concerns, we're happy to take those and, and make that connection with ITD.
Thank you very much.
The only thing I'd ask council to think about and consider, like I say, to my knowledge, just thinking this is the first place ACHD has contemplated putting in these type of median treatments. Again, does this make sense for the city? I know we've had the, we talked about the multi-use pathways. If this is an area that we want to engage in conversation. I mean, they were put on Eagle Road for safety reasons at that, at the locations where they currently exist. You know, we, Meridian Road, we have separations, intersections, we have separations. This is a, to, to the point, they're harder to maintain, they, you know, the sightliness of them. You know, what makes this section of road more needing of them than the previous miles that they haven't put them on? And the cost, because it will reduce our ability long-term, it has to. More you spend on each mile, the less miles you can do overall. If we want to engage ACHD on that topic generally, if this is going to be their new preferred option. Again, I think it's about community planning, community identity, community vision. Don't need to make that conversation today, but I ask you to think about it and if it's something that you think we should discuss, we can come back and have that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
No. Yes.
Uh, I was just going to remind Miranda to make sure that fire, this is the first I've heard of stuff like this with the, putting stuff in the center medians. And we just want to make sure that with the amount of traffic that we're experiencing out there right now, we just want to make sure that we have ample access to get through some of these busy areas. Because I know as a, as a driver, when I was at the Station 34, we utilize that center concrete median barrier as a roadway to get through when that area is blocked up there in front of St. Luke's. So I just want to make sure that Miranda runs that past fire and police before these get moved forward also. That was it.
I forgot about the value of public safety in those areas. With that, let's move on to our next cost share conversation, which is item 21. This time, our Parks and Recreation Department regarding pedestrian underpass. And I will mic into the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Simison. Good to see you all, councilmembers, and it is nice to be here in person. There it is. So this cost share opportunity is one that we kind of went knocking at ACHD's door. We found out they were working on a bridge at Star Road that interfaces with our 5-Mile Pathway and 5-Mile Creek. And so we approached them. This is a case of a bridge project that's happening in advance of a roadway project. A culvert-style bridge, you can see the schedule, we're, they're in design now. So it's not too late to get in on design, but that's why we're here for you today. We don't have even a draft cost share agreement. We're just looking for some indication of interest or not to pursue this project. So right-of-way next year, construction in '23. So if it were a cost share, nothing would be due for a couple of years. In terms of project context, this is the field subarea, four square miles northwest of our city area of impact. It's not currently in the city. But as you can see with the, the star at Star Road, it's really just in the, in the very center of that area. We're also in the ITD plans for State Highway 16 to have a pedestrian underpass there at 5-Mile Creek. So potentially this gives us three miles of contiguous pathway, new pathway out west where there isn't the major area of a highway or major roadway. And that being said, we don't know the specifics of McDermott Road yet, but it's a potential to have a relatively free-flowing pedestrian run. So the opportunity is to pursue a cost share agreement. We would add additional length to the bridge, that's been our conversation, and provide room for a pathway under Star Road. I don't know if any of you are civil engineers, I'm a landscape architect and there really are no plans yet. Like, they're talking a stiff-legged culvert, which I looked up and I just put together kind of a conceptual drawing to show the difference between what ACHD was proposing, just a pretty straightforward crossing of 5-Mile Creek versus a crossing where there would be height to the culvert and some additional length to the bridge, culvert for pathway. We're still, so cost would sort of vary depending on what clearance we're looking for, how high the pathway is relative to 5-Mile Creek. So there's some variables that could be adjusted. We'd probably expect that it, it might be flooded some of the time or during high-water years. But we're, we're early on in that process. The vertical separation of pedestrian and vehicle complex is something that I get, I get calls about, you know, people who've been to St. George and are excited and why don't we do that? Why don't we go under our roadways in Meridian? And we haven't really done that to date. And it's, it's not as easy here as it is, say, on the Boise River, but we know how it works along the Green Belt to just separate that traffic completely. So just as a landscape architect and the pathway person, I thought it was worth an ask because I think it is a great standard for pedestrian facilities. We've got a lot of continuous pathway to the southeast, starting at 10 Mile at our new trailhead. And, and I think this could be a way to really amplify some of the community and open space elements that are included in the fields subarea plan. And I have not been specifically part of this planning. But just this excerpt I've included in the presentation, yeah, this would, this underpass would be right in the middle along the 5-Mile Creek and there's a proposed regional park and some greenways, some higher-density housing, some retail and office space. Down in the southeast corner, it's not highlighted, but O'Whee High School. Also, there's some pathway that interfaces with the 5-Mile Creek. So there, there are a lot of things to connect in this area. We've identified a future connection to Nampa, could be years in the making, but one would happen along 5-Mile Creek and then east, of course, to the rest of the pathway system. So, yeah, it, it could really serve this, this plan. Cost-wise, we're, we're in that place where we don't have enough detail to easily get a specific cost, but we're not really able to push them to go forward without agreeing to pay for something if, if we do. So we got some very high-level planning estimates and, and the range would indicate, you know, just some basic unknowns plus, you know, we would have some decisions to make regarding clearance, bridge height, but this would include, with raising the bridge as well, we, we'd have some additional roadway costs. So you've kind of got rise and run. If the rise is higher, then the run would be a little bit longer to address that added height. So there'd be some additional impact to the bridge approach and we'd like to look at making a connection potentially from Star Road when it's improved down to the 5-Mile Pathway with some sort of a ramp like you would see along the Boise Green Belt. So there's some additional right-of-way costs. So I think the efficiency here would be in terms of construction. Design-wise, we've made it a little bit more complicated for them. And if for some reason we had been designed it and then a future council wasn't behind it or for some reason the city opted not to pursue this, you know, we could be online for some, some design fees. So I'd be interested to hear your thoughts. And as I said in summary, just, it, it seemed like an opportunity, the very least I wanted to ask about. It may or may not be something council wants to do, but just in terms of, of vision for pathways, I'd be curious to hear your thoughts and, and if there's any interest in going forward talking about a cost share with ACHD.
Thank you, Kim. And council, if I could just add on from when the director first approached us to me, I took this as, as not resetting the standard for all pathway connections. I, I, I do think it has some similarities to our previous conversation about where does that make sense in some aspects and as the fields area specifically, if we're looking for that area to be a more connected sub-ecosystem of the city. But this seemed to have as much of a nexus to that conversation as any and the existing one that will likely connect it through McDermott. But at least from my perspective, I, I would not be looking this to be the standard that we would set for all pathway crossings moving forward. It would have to be a case-by-case or a unique situation. So with that, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there's even going to ask, but, uh, thanks. I looked at the presentation over the weekend, I was a little, you get a little bit of sticker shock when you look at what we used to kind of allocate for pathways to see the cost of this. But I think this is the right project at the right time. I appreciate you bringing this to us and being forward-looking. I'm, I'm clearly supportive conceptually, recognizing that this has come before us at a later budget time with a little bit more truthing in the costs. But conception based on the numbers you've given us, I think it's the, it's the right decision. I'm very, very supportive.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I, I feel like I'm sort of lacking some context here. So what currently is, is the waterway buried under Star Road? And what is, what design is changing? And I, I didn't anticipate that there were going to be changes to that section of Star Road until it was widened in some time way, way in the future. But is this, is this something that's being prompted because of, of Highway 16? And, and I, I guess I'm trying to understand why we're having this discussion about Star Road. It seems like this is so far out in the future. So it must be something ACHD has a project that they're working on and they've approached us. It sounds like that's the case.
If I may, Councilwoman, it's, I couldn't find the actual roadway widening project on the work plan. So yes, that's in the future. This is a case where they're improving the bridge in advance and we just heard about it and said, boy, this, wouldn't it be great to at least ask if we could do this? So the bridge itself will be maybe 110 feet wide, like to the ultimate width of the roadway, which at some point in the future will be widened. So the, the bridge is happening now and this would be our chance to get under the bridge. The roadway won't happen for a while. It's a bit to, the Star Road is to the west of State Highway 16, which is also happening. There's, it's kind of confusing to have both projects happening somewhat.
Perhaps I didn't ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Perhaps I didn't ask my question very clearly. I'm trying to understand why they are needing a bridge in this area. Star Road, I, I don't, Star Road already goes over the creek, doesn't it? So what's the necessity of the bridge?
It's on the work plan. I'm not, I'm not sure about the specifics. Normally we track roadway projects and we have quite a bit of involvement, not so much with bridges. And often they're kind of a one-two. It all happens like at 10 Mile Road where we did the cost share. We got part of that bridge and it happened with the roadway. So this just kind of, we noticed they were doing the bridge in advance. So it's, it's not typical, but this would be a chance to get under.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up question. Mr. Mayor, follow-up question.
Councilwoman Pro.
What if that plan wasn't... If our proposed plan wasn't approved, what would the pedestrian access look like? Would it just... Would a pedestrian just head north or south on one side of the road until the bridge comes down to level with the road and then make a crossing there and come back around? Is that just sort of your typical crossing with the bridge? That's essentially what would happen?
Yeah, I think there, councilwoman, there would be an at-grade crossing to the north or south if we didn't have... And then obviously, the... Or maybe just at the bridge, we'd have a signal crossing. This is just, it's, yeah, it's more than that. But the crossing would be planned. We asked... They're not doing the roadway now. We did ask if they, with the roadway, would plan to do a signal crossing. Could we essentially pay the difference between a signal crossing and an underpass? But it's a fairly future conversation, and the project manager indicated that probably that wouldn't be an option. But other crossings would be made.
I guess kind of following up on it, well, one thing we don't know is this pathway is currently in the irrigation easement, would be my guess. And if we can't cross at the irrigation easement, we may have a cost if we had to purchase property to move it outside the easement because it couldn't go in that location? Or would the... I don't know. I mean, it's... Or would you be able to stay in the easement with the hill that's planned to go over that?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think that this would hinge on permission from Nampa, Meridian. We've already discussed that with State Highway 16. I think that a proposal to...
If we had to go north, how far north would we go? Would we be outside of the easement to even do an at-grade crossing?
Oh, let's go... Chris, do you mind opening that presentation again, please? Maybe we could at least look at a map while we...
If that's relevant.
Talk about it.
It just might be an offsetting cost that we may avoid or may not. I don't know.
So, yeah, it looks like we would be crossing at some point probably to the north, maybe MacMillan, so just out of the way and then back to the creek. I don't think the mouse works. Yeah, it would be possible to divert some distance to an intersection crossing or to a prescribed distance from an intersection and cross Star Road there.
And my point is, we may or may not own that land. We either have to secure an easement or purchase in order to...
Correct, yes.
Accommodate a crossing.
So, Mayor and council, yes, I... We... I think it could easily be included within our master pathway agreement. Now, I haven't spoken explicitly with Nampa and Meridian about this one. I know with State Highway 16 to the east, they were not looking to go under. It's solely a city underpass. So of course, we'd work that out with them. And I think that if we couldn't... Didn't have that permission, this probably wouldn't be a realistic project.
Ms. Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with your assessment that there are particular areas that we need to look at and say, yeah, I think we need an underpass there. And I think this is one. You look out projecting towards the future, and even with Highway 16, this is going to see a lot of traffic as the area grows. I really wish we could have done it under 10 Mile, you know, with that connection to the freeway, but at the time, just wasn't doable and whatnot. So a case-by-case basis, I certainly support moving that forward and making that work in this location. And other opportunities, as they come up, they're worth discussing.
And councilman, to speak to the mayor's earlier comment, just about the precedent... I mean, we do have a precedent of at-grade crossings, and, yeah, I don't really see that changing. This is one spot where in a key area, it might make sense to do it differently.
Mr. Mayor. I think it also brings up the point I want to make that, you know, we don't have any dedicated funding for pathways. You know, they're not eligible for impact fees, and council's been good about making sure the priority areas are funded every year in the budget. But it would be nice to have a source of funding that comes in from new growth or development somehow that we can put towards our pathways and build up a fund. It benefits everybody in the community, so it doesn't matter if North Meridian's grown and there's money that goes into this fund and the pathways in South Meridian. It's all about connectivity. So somehow, some way, we gotta maybe find a way we can make that happen, so.
Council, any additional questions?
So I guess my goal here, Mr. Mayor and council, would be to... Is there interest in at least looking at a cost share agreement, drafting something preliminary, getting a better idea? Okay, I'm interested to hear that support. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I will excuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Council, we've reached the end of our work session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burke.
A move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion. Motion, second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, sing by saying aye. opposed nay. Yes, I say that we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record. It is August 10th, six, August 10th, 2021 at 6:01 PM. We will begin this evening's meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next item on the agenda is our community invocation, which will be delivered this evening by Priest Rick Capazza of the Church of the Holy Trinity. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for this gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Give us to be the leaders your people need. And help us to see humanity and dignity in those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, most gracious God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of human persons. A community that puts the needs of our lowliest members over our own desires and comforts. Afflict us when we are comfortable and comfort us when we are afflicted. We ask this as your sons and daughters confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you.
Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
There are no changes to the agenda this evening, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is the public forum. Mr. Clerk, we have people sign up for end of the public forum this evening.
Mr. Mayor, we do. We had six signups before 6:00 PM. First, if she is present, is Nancy Allen.
If you come forward and you'll be recognized for three minutes, that your name and address. And then typically, there's no discussion after the public forum. After your presentation, it's just information for council to consider later time. And after you speak, I'll just say thank you for the information. There will, there's clearly no discussion from council after the public forum.
Okay.
If it's something that needs to be noted for a future date, then that's when we would have a future discussion.
Do I need to speak? Can you hear me?
Perfect.
My name is Nancy Allen. And my address?
Yes.
4043 North Line Parkway in Meridian. Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Simison, councilmen and women. Thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Nancy Allen. I'm a resident of Meridian. I have lived here with my husband and four children since 2003. Meridian has been a haven of good for me and my family, good neighbors, good schools, good leaders, and I'm proud to call Meridian my home. This past year, however, has not been so good, not for many people to say the least. I'm a registered nurse of 22 years. I currently work at St. Luke's Medical Center. The last 18 months, I have worked and sacrificed many hours for hospitals, hospitalized patients in the Treasure Valley. I continue to work during uncertain and scary times, putting myself and my family at risk each time I arrived at my shift. I worked when there was limited PPE and was made to reuse my N95 over and over for weeks at a time, hanging it in a brown paper sack taped to my locker, only to be saved for the next day. I worked as a nurse leader through daily and sometimes hourly protocol changes that were stressful to patients, their families, and my staff. Not that I ever asked for it, but I was praised and considered essential and valued for just doing the job I love to do. Fast forward to mid-July, I was informed by my employer via email that I'm no longer essential or valued. I have been mandated to accept the COVID-19 vaccine by September 1st, or I will be terminated from my lifelong career. My reason for choosing not to receive the vax is personal, and I do not wish to disclose it at this time. However, that is not the only reason I'm speaking out. I'm choosing to speak out today because of the unfair, forceful, and coercive tactics that my employer is using. It is appalling. The Constitution safeguards a person's bodily autonomy and right to choose whether to accept or decline medical interventions, yet employers who are mandating vaccines are blatantly disregarding this individual right. I want you to know that no matter how careful I tried to be at work, I ended up contracting COVID. My whole family contracted it as well. Thankfully, we made it all through without severe side effects.
Good.
But I now carry antibodies that studies are showing to have made, made me more robust, best, and longer lasting effects against further COVID illnesses, including variants. Studies are showing that many persons who have had the vaccine breakthrough cases are having more severe symptoms than unvaccinated people who contract COVID. Just a side note, I know at least three staff members I work personally with who have had terrible breakthrough illnesses with COVID after being vaccinated. My employer is not acknowledging the studies of antibodies to show exemptions for my working. We are neither being afforded the opportunity to continue to wear masks in the workplace as an alternative, even though that was perfectly acceptable during the pandemic and with those who refused flu vaccines in the past. We are not being allowed any alternatives or exemptions except rare religious and medical exemptions, which only includes anaphylaxis. So why am I sharing with this, this with you? I am concerned for myself, my family, my community. I have a medical condition that requires expensive daily lifesaving medications in order to survive. When I am terminated from my job, I will lose my benefits. Medical, is that for me to stop?
It is, if you can wrap up. Any final, any final comment you'd like to make?
Um, I would just like to, since I didn't run out of time, I'd like to forward this to email, if that is okay to?
If you want, give it to the clerk. We, he'll make sure he, we all get copies of it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Jen Graves.
Hey Nancy, I moved here in 2003 as well.
I don't, I don't think I will be able to finish mine in three minutes. So my name is Jen Graves. Also attended the University of Oregon. Um, so my address is 421 South Locust Street in Nampa, Idaho. Um, and so, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. The recent pandemic has impacted healthcare in unprecedented ways. It has stretched our abilities as a nation and local communities in ways we did not anticipate. It changed the way patients were treated and their care was managed, and it has affected our day-to-day life. I was employed by a large healthcare system in the Treasure Valley during the pandemic. I am also a student in the healthcare, in health science and the nursing field. I believe some of my personal experience also pertains directly to the city council because my employment was at a family medicine clinic here in Meridian. My fear is that our healthcare system is falling apart, and the only victims will be citizens of this community. On July 8th, due to low statewide vaccine compliance and buy-in, three large healthcare organizations announced to their employees and the public employees would be mandated to be fully vaccinated against COVID with one of three vaccinations by receiving a shot by receiving a shot currently made available in the U.S. under emergency use authorization. Employees, public, the media, and our elected representatives have been told that staffers with documented medical and religious exemptions will not be required to get the shot. What is not being provided is clear criteria for receiving or granting medical and religious exemption by these organizations, only leading the public and employees to believe that the decisions are arbitrary and discriminate based on religion and documented medical conditions and disability. This is problematic. I want to touch on a couple things. Pre-pandemic healthcare workers were needed in the state of Idaho, especially in rural communities. By imposing this mandate on employees who are also citizens in Idaho needing to make personal healthcare decisions for their bodies, um, executives in the industry fanned the flame of the healthcare crisis. I'm not sure that these organizations realize that both vaccinated and unvaccinated plan on leaving their organizations because of this mandate. I have heard through many in this valley who work in nursing patient access as lab techs, phlebotomists, clinical and non-clinical, vaccinated and non-vaccinated, that they plan to end their employment with these organizations if they plan to continue these unethical mandates forcing their will on another individual, which is not informed consent. To many of us who are being educated in Idaho in the health science.
If you could, if you could wrap up.
Okay, so, um, we're in a healthcare crisis. We, we have an educate, uh, aging population of providers, and those of us who are being educated are forced to reconsider whether we want to continue our education and provide our skills to the people of Idaho, and this mandate is going to further that crisis. Um, I can also provide my comments in the link I have to submit to you guys. And just the last point is that, um, these are not private businesses. They get millions of dollars in public funding. They get kickbacks and they get, um, so, so the argument that these businesses.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I will provide that, and I would like a formal meeting with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, call my office and I may have you set that up.
Thank you. Oh, oh, I have the, I have.
Mr. Mayor, next is Christine Bailey.
The one right in front of you. Other one's kind of broke.
I would use that one. That one's functioning. That's right.
I'm not, I'm just, I don't like public speaking, even though I'm a nursing nurse educator in the area. So. So my name So, again, so my name is Christine Bailey. My address is 7682 East Jewell Yard Street in Nampa, Idaho. I recently came back here to Idaho after having been gone for about 15 years or so. We knew we were to seek refuge, so. I want to start off by saying I'm not anti-vaccine. I'm here tonight to represent a voice, the voices of nurses who want autonomy. Autonomy goes hand in hand with the informed consent. Informed consent, as you, as you know, is permission granted in the knowledge of the possible consequences with full knowledge of possible risks and benefits. Informed consent is a process of communication between you and your healthcare provider that often leads to agreement or permission for care. Informed consent helps to avoid misunderstandings or confusion about what to expect when undergoing a medical treatment. Consent is not to be forced or coerced. The AAPS just released their statement on July 27th, 2021, declaring all human beings have the right to liberty, which they do not forfeit when they serve the sick or disabled. The ethical commitment to protect others does not require workers to surrender their bodily integrity and self-determination and accept THE intervention dictated by a governmental or quasi-governmental authority. Those of us who have not yet granted permission may still get the vaccine, once we feel all our questions are answered. We feel this vaccine mandate is coercion without our expressed consent, offering ways out including religion and medical waivers. But what if we just do not want the vaccine? In the words of the Nuremberg Code that we're all looking up lately, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential." You do not at this time have my consent. If a patient said that to me, I would say, "Can you tell me what concerns you?" Or, "Okay, I'll let your provider know." I've recovered from COVID just recently this June. I probably have more antibodies to the virus than those who obtain the vaccine, but I don't know because this type of science is not widely being studied. Personally, there is not enough research for me yet. I'm demonized for trying to research for myself to make my own decision. It does not mean I'll never consent. Let us choose our time and our terms. I just have a few questions before I ever get it. So we use titers to prove that we've had viruses like varicella and the measles, so why not this one? And complete, can you please present to me the risk of fatality should I receive the vaccine after being fully recovered from COVID-19? Can you explain to me why there isn't antibody testing prior to the vaccine? Can you explain as to why there is not a possibility of a COVID passport? The final questions I leave you with are, what if, what is the outcome that you're going to see once this event is going to be forced on us? What would it lead to if the number of nurses refusing treatment are terminated? How will you help us? And thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, next is Robin Raptash.
My name is Robin Raptash, and I reside at 7756 Highway 45 in Nampa. As a master's prepared nurse, I've come here today to discuss public health concerns and access to information. I formulated my inquiry and my statement around questions, and I'm going to present these questions to you. I hope that you will make some of these questions your own. The reason I hope that you make some of these questions your own is because they can guide your own research. They will guide the way you take care of yourself, the way you take care of your family, and the suggestions that you have for the physicians that may take care of you and the policymakers that might, may guide the way your children are cared for in their learning environments and the way businesses are managed in the public domain. Bear with me. What is a vector? What size is this pathogen? How does infection present? What is known about the daily course of this infection? How does it behave on days one, five, and days eight through 10? Why do people present to emergency rooms on days eight through 10 most frequently? What is a pulse oximeter? Where can you find one? How should you use it? And why should every home have one? What is VAERS? What are its strengths and weaknesses? How are healthcare providers directed to use it? Who monitors it? How is VAERS reporting used to direct improvement in public health outcomes? What is V-safe? And how is it used? Who's monitoring it? And is it linked to VAERS? An Israeli study identified a clotting disorder associated with mRNA vaccinations. This is similar to the clotting disorder that has been documented in COVID's, COVID illness. What other studies present the same findings? What is the credibility of the scientist who reported these findings? How are physicians being taught to recognize adverse reactions? Is there any gap in the information that physicians get? Which reactions are immediate? Which might be delayed by weeks or months? How does that affect reporting? What is Guillain-Barre? How does it present? Should patients be given, should patients being given the mRNA vaccine be educated about the presentation of Guillain-Barre? Why did the FDA recently issue a warning for increased incidences of Guillain-Barre from Pfizer vaccines? What vaccines are being offered to patients in the hospitals in this state? What is the default vaccine being given to patients who don't specify which ones they want in the hospitals in this valley? What are the protocols that govern the administration of COVID vaccine? Why is it possible for a nurse to give any patient in the hospital a shingles vaccine or a pneumonia vaccine at any time during their stay, but COVID vaccines are given three to five hours before discharge?
If you could wrap up, please.
Pardon?
If you could wrap up, the timer went off.
I want to make sure you get these resources. I want you all to resource Dr. Robert Malone and Dr. Peter McCullough. Their credentials are well-regarded and well-respected, and they are still on the internet. You can find information that will guide you in answering these questions, and you need them to keep your family safe. You will not find me on the internet because as of this morning, Facebook has taken me down for publishing videos of Dr. McCullough and Dr. Malone, which they have on their websites. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Robin, would you mind giving a copy of your comments to our clerk?
But I, what I really would like to provide is I would like to provide this in writing along with my resources and links, so you don't have to do the research, so you can find them readily. And I would like for them to be published so that people can too, because I want to add one more thing. Please allow me one more thing. Do you understand what ambulatory, ambulatory care treatment of COVID is? You should know, because in the United States, physicians are prescribing it. Where are they prescribing it here? Where else are people being told to go home and wait for the heart attack to see what happens? It's immoral, but there are tools. So I'll provide you with that information and the tools. I hope, I hope it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Buddy Allen.
Good evening. My name's Buddy Allen. My address is 4043 North Zion Parkway. I've been a local resident and a chiropractor here in Meridian for the past 18 years.
What city do you live in?
Oh, Meridian, sorry. Apologize. In her 2009 article, "Drug Companies and Doctors: A Story of Corruption," Dr. Marcia Engel wrote, "It is simply no longer possible to believe much of the clinical research that is published or to rely on the judgment of trusted physicians or authoritative medical guidelines. I take no pleasure in this conclusion, which I reached slowly and reluctantly over my two decades as an editor of the New England Journal of Medicine." This is a bold and sobering statement from an editor of one of the most prestigious medical journals in the world. But the truth is, medicine has completely lost the trust of tens of millions of people across the country, and never has this been more evident, as in this past year and a half, with the management and treatment of COVID-19. Americans have been marketed to, bribed, pressured, bullied, shamed, and now threatened to take the vaccine, and still nearly 50% of the country is not willing to be vaccinated with a non-FDA-approved drug. This is, uh, this is not happening with, out of ignorance, but rather a complete lack of honest medical and, in some cases, governmental transparency and leadership. Recently, the three largest healthcare providers in our community announced mandatory vaccinations for all employees. Take the jab or lose your job. This mandate reeks of coercion and medical tyranny as, and is yet another reason not to, or for people not to trust medicine. The nurses and healthcare workers that one year ago were hailed as frontline heroes, now on social media and mainstream media, are being ridiculed as disposable anti-vaxxer trash. Nothing could be further from the truth. These are not ignorant hillbillies that know nothing about health and human anatomy, but rather highly educated individuals on the subject. Our local hospitals had the opportunity to lead their organizations and our community with compassion, poison, optimism, uh, this past 18 months, and offer hope to those who were sick, scared, and suffering, but chose instead to create and capitalize on uncertainty and fear. Thousands have already reached out to our state representatives to reconvene and discuss the issue at hand. Many of our representatives are willing, while others resist or fall silent. Today, I ask you, our local elected city representatives, to raise your voices, use your influence, and urge our state representatives to go to work and have an open, honest debate as to how to best represent the freedoms of the citizens of your community. As I ask you, uh, as, sorry, I ask you to, almost done, just wrap up, okay? I ask you to protect the rights of Meridian residents by supporting freedom of bodily autonomy. You can do this by making formal statement, as did Nampa, that you will not mandate city employees to be vaccinated. Whether you agree or disagree with the COVID vaccine is not the debate at hand. It is freedom versus force. I ask you to uphold freedom and lead us with compassion, optimism, hope, and not through fear, force, or hopelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, finally is Kelly Graff.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Graff. I don't reside in Meridian any longer. I reside at 1689 East 4,000 North in Buell. I, um, actually grew up in Meridian and attended Meridian High, so I have some deep roots in this valley. But, um, more than that, I've been a nurse for 20 years. I'm a master's prepared nurse. I specialize in pediatric care, and I have worked for one of our health systems since I was in high school, quite honestly. So, um, this, this is heartfelt and a true testimony of how I feel. I am here to speak on behalf of a local organization called Take a Stand Now that has been founded out of the desire to not have mandated vaccines. I'm going to do what nurses do, and we're going to just break this down into our major concerns here, so you're going to get four things from me. So first, we're going to have the situation. So my situation for you guys is that there's a potential for critical shortage of healthcare workers that will affect Meridian, Meridian citizens. The background, what's causing this is that, at the time of the statement, we have had 205,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the state. Ada County has had 57,000 of those. We have lost two, over 2,000 Idahoans to COVID, and we have lost 496 of those here in Ada County. The recent COVID pandemic has impacted healthcare in unprecedented ways, and it has stretched our abilities as a nation and a local community in ways that we were previously not seen or prepared for. It's affected our ability to treat and manage pacem, patients, to even clean their rooms, answer their callites, allow visitors to be with them, and even give us supplies to care for them appropriately. The recent COVID vaccine mandate that was put forth by St. Al, St. Luke's, and, uh, primary health is going to further impact this. We have all been given our dates of termination of September 1st, followed by September 9th, and then September 18th. Unfortunately, what that shows for you guys is that locally, our media has begun quoting our, our leaders in these organizations. And a quote from Dr. Souza, our St. Luke's chief physician executive, just over a week ago, quote said, "That is the straw that is straining the back of our care capacity. The problem with the straw, if you will, is that the potential to become an entire bale of hay over just a few weeks, and that would become a major problem," end quote. He goes on to express that limited healthcare capacity would not only affect COVID patients, but those who are seeking care for other serious ailments such as stroke, heart attack, trauma, or those simply celebrating the gift of life and welcoming their newborn child. On July 28th, just 20 days after the mandate, the St. Luke's announced that they would be pausing labor and delivery services as well as surgical service, surgical cases due to staffing shortages at their Jerome Hospital. Recently, this, a similar announcement was made for Magic Valley. They are pausing all elective surgeries in the Twin Falls area as of next week. That same, I'll wrap it up, that same, um, precedent of pausing elective surgeries is going to happen here in the Treasure Valley next week. As of this statement, there are over 2,000 healthcare positions posted between St. Al, St. Luke's, and primary health here in the Treasure Valley, and they represent the way that your community seeks healthcare, and that is where they will be seeking healthcare. So I just urge you guys to consider that and perhaps put a resolution above that restricts mandates on healthcare workers at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That ends our public forum portion for this evening. If anyone didn't get an opportunity, if you'd like to sign up next week, you're more than welcome to come back at that point in time, um, from that standpoint. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. No, no questions, but maybe just a quick comment, if I may. Just, I want to say thanks to the nurses that are in the room and the other healthcare professionals. I know there was a comment made that you felt like that you were demonized, and this space is not for demonization. I think you've got a body that comes here with an open mind, and we appreciate you sharing your information and perspective with us, and we appreciate, especially know somebody who was a little challenging. We appreciate you taking your time to join us tonight.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item one for the evening, a public hearing for Victory Commons Easement Vacation H 2021-0045. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. I'll turn this over to Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item before you tonight is a request for a vacation of a public utility and drainage and irrigation easement. This site is 16.7 acres. It's currently zoned CG and is located at the northeast corner of South Meridian Road and East Victory Road. Last year, city council approved the final plat for Victory Commons subdivision. Following council's approval, and after further research, the applicant discovered that there was a public utility drainage and irrigation easement that had been recorded with the previous Muscle Corner subdivision plat. This easement had historically been used by Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, but drainage improvements made this easement no longer necessary. The applicant has submitted letters from all potential easement holders consenting to vacation of this easement. Staff is recommending approval. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Okay. Uh, is the applicant in the room or online this evening?
Mr. Mayor, Ryan Cutler is online, uh, if he wishes to say anything.
Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and councilmen, women, Ryan Cutler, Orox Engineering, 2775 West Navigator Drive in Meridian, Idaho, 83642. We appreciate your time tonight. We will take very much of it. Thankful for staff and their presentation and for their recommendation of approval, which we agree with. And we also, as mentioned, have all the letters and documentation from the utility companies that are part of this easement that are in favor of this being vacated, and we agree with that as well. We'll stand for any questions at this point.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant? Uh, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody that signed up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, well, if there's anybody in the room that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item, please do so at this time, or if you're online and you would like to provide testimony, please use your, raise your hand feature. Um, and I don't think any of the four participants would want to provide testimony as their staff or ACD, or the applicant. So, uh, see no one wishing to come forward? Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Uh, we are good at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then with that, council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we close the public hearing on H-2021-0045.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we approve of item number H-2021-0045.
I have a motion, a second to approve the item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden, Cavanagh, Burrow, Hoagland, Burn.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Next item up is a public hearing for TM Creek Apartments, Phase 3, H 2021-0035. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a rezone and a conditional use permit. This site is currently zoned TNC and CG and is located south of West Franklin Road and east of South Ten Mile Road. Little history on this property, it was, development of this property is governed by the TM Crossing Development Agreement and the design guidelines for TM Crossing. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use commercial and high-density residential. The applicant has applied for a rezone of five point five eight acres of land from the TNC to the CG zoning district. Most of the area proposed to be rezoned is designated mixed-use commercial within the ten-mile interchange specific area plan with a narrow sliver along the east boundary designated as high-density residential. The proposed CG zoning and multifamily residential and live-work vertically integrated uses are consistent with the future land use map designations for this property. Because the area proposed to be rezoned is governed by the TM Crossing Development Agreement, a new development agreement or amendment to the existing agreement is not recommended by staff. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily residential development consisting of two hundred and thirty-eight apartment units on seven point eight-three acres of land in the CG zoning district. A variety of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and live-work units are proposed at a gross density of thirty point four units per acre. A total of one thousand eight hundred and fifteen square feet of non-residential uses are proposed in the vertically integrated residential structure, which is a principally permitted use in the CG district and will allow a variety of commercial uses. The vertically integrated residential use is proposed at the corner where the private street intersects Wayfinder. Two live-work units are proposed. The remainder of the building to the south is proposed to be entirely multifamily residential. The applicant has requested alternative compliance to UDC 114327B3 to provide a lesser amount of private open space for each unit, as noted in the staff report, and to UDC Table 113C6, which does not include a requirement for parking for studio units, to allow the vertically integrated standard to apply. The director has approved these requests with the condition of approval requiring the pathway along the southern boundary of the site adjacent to the creek to be widened from eight feet to ten feet. That is condition 4H. The applicant has requested this condition be removed due to existing topography along the creek. Because this pathway is not designated as a multi-use pathway, staff is amenable to this request if council deems appropriate. This is something that should be included in your motion tonight, please. Access is proposed via a private street from Wayfinder Avenue, a collector's street along the west boundary of the site. With approval of alternative compliance, a minimum of three hundred and seventy-two parking spaces are required. A total of three hundred and seventy-nine spaces are proposed. Based on the size of the living area in the proposed units, all between five hundred and twelve hundred square feet, a minimum of one point three seven acres of common open space is required to be provided within the development. A total of two point five one acres is proposed, as shown. Though some of this area does not qualify as private, some of it is private open space and is not really usable, for example, the parking lot planners, the internal common open space and area along the Ten Mile Creek is two point two acres, which exceeds UDC standards. Based on two hundred and thirty-eight units, a minimum of five amenities are required, but the decision-making body is authorized to consider additional amenities if they believe the proposed amenities aren't adequate for the size of the development. The applicant is proposing a clubhouse with a fitness center, bike repair room, and pet grooming station, swimming pool, open grassy areas of at least fifty feet by one hundred feet in size, fireside seating, grilling area, and sports courts, consisting of snookball and ping pong. The Ten Mile Creek multi-use pathway also lies adjacent to the site on the south side of the creek for residents to use. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the proposed four-story structures, as shown. Building materials consist of stucco and bricks in neutral colors. Final design is required to comply with the adopted TM Crossing Design Guidelines. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Josh Beach and John Wardle, Brighton Corporation testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation. Key issues, the applicant requested changes to the following conditions, number 4H, to change the width of the pathway from ten feet to eight feet, as proposed, to number, condition number eight, delete the requirement for a public pedestrian easement, and condition number nine, to remove the language pertaining to compliance with the design guidelines in the Ten Mile Interchange Specific Area Plan and the standards in the Architectural Standards Manual, to instead require compliance with the Ten Mile Crossing Design Guidelines as required by the Development Agreement. Key issues of discussion by the commission were the adequacy of parking proposed for the development, the applicant's request for a reduction in the width of the pathway from ten feet to eight feet along the southern boundary of the site due to the topography near the creek, if fencing should be provided along the creek for public safety, and desire for more than two vertically integrated residential structures to be provided along Wayfinder Avenue. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. They deleted condition number eight, which required a public pedestrian easement, and modified condition number nine, as requested by the applicant. The commission supported staff's recommendation for the provision of a ten-foot instead of an eight-foot wide pathway along the southern boundary of the site. Outstanding issue for council tonight, as I previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting condition 4H is deleted, that requires the eight-foot wide pedestrian pathway on the north side of the creek to be widened to ten feet due to the significant grade change from the site to the irrigation district's maintenance road along the creek. Written testimony that's been submitted since the commission hearing was from Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation, and that was containing the previously mentioned request for the change to the staff condition. Staff will stand for any questions. The applicant is here tonight to testify.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilman Burt.
What a snook ball.
You may have to wait for that answer.
Can't wait for it, John.
A question for, I don't know if the, Sonya, if this is for you or not, on the pathway question. So the topography is, is the issue, the location of, because to me, ten feet versus eight feet. It sounds like topography is the issue. So is it more that you want, they want ten feet or more that, it could be eight feet, just put it further to the left and don't put it as far to the right because of the topography?
I, Mr. Mayor, council, I believe the applicant's planning to cover that in their presentation.
Okay. I too jumped ahead.
Thank you.
Councilmember. So with that, there's no further questions for staff, last applicant to come forward. We recognize for fifteen minutes to answer those pressing questions.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. For the record, my name is John Wardle. My work address is 2929 West Navigator, Suite 400, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I do not intend to take fifteen minutes, although I am happy to answer the question about what snook ball is. It is billiards with your feet. So consider it like a soccer ball size. Have you seen, they do that with golf as well. It's just a small court where you can play pool with your feet. So that's snook ball. We invite you to come over and try it out. It might be a new, a new activity besides curling, so. Do I have control of this over here, Sonya?
Mr. Mayor, the mouse is very, yeah, the mouse is not working really well.
Oh, maybe. Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor and council, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. This first exhibit is just showing the continuation of residential opportunities at Ten Mile Crossing. We've already developed Phase One and Phase Two and have since built out the regional pathway system on the south side of Ten Mile Creek. It now extends from Franklin Road about nine hundred feet to the east of Wayfinder, and Wayfinder is the north-south road in the middle of your screen here. Wayfinder was designed to be kind of a, a main street where we, we've done some modifications to that street. We have parallel parking. We have expanded sidewalks there as well. In our Phase Three project, which is before you tonight, we have brought the buildings up to Wayfinder. See if I can scroll this down. Sonya, maybe you could help me out and just roll that down to the next. Great, thank you. As I said, we're bringing the buildings to Wayfinder, so there is a, a relationship with that street. We've also included or added two live-work units right here on the corner in the northwest corner of that first building. All these building, all these units will actually front out on Wayfinder. They'll have a front door. There'll be an opportunity for, if somebody's coming to, to service or come for a business in one of those live-work units to park in front. And so it's really designed to start to bring that living experience forward towards Wayfinder. The one issue we have that we're asking for is really a question regarding the sidewalk. It's been mentioned that it's a pathway and, and the slight difference here is, or the nuance here is the pathways are typically public facilities. What we're asking for here is a, the sidewalk on the south end of the buildings, which is highlighted here in, in blue, that we already proposed it to be an eight-foot sidewalk. We, we see the importance of having that connection east to west. But below, at a significant grade below, is also a gravel access road the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District controls, and that is the side of the Ten Mile Creek that they use to maintain it. We're going to be putting a sidewalk up above that at some distance. I'm just, see if I can move this down to the next screen here. One more, thanks. I want to go next one. Right there. Th- this shows you the difference in height between what's happening with the Nampa Meridian Irrigation elevation and where, where we are up above. With a single building, these pads are large pads and they are all at the same elevation. So even though it's sloping down, that pad is going to be sitting up fairly high. We, we believe we still have, we do have room to get an eight-foot sidewalk in there, and you may not feel like two additional feet is that big of a deal, but it means that we're extending a retaining wall even up higher. We're filling in behind that and we are going to be having probably the, the need to have some sort of fence on top of that retaining wall, which is in the property. Again, we're fully on board of doing a sidewalk. We're just asking that we minimize it or reduce it to eight feet instead of a ten-foot sidewalk on the south side of the building. A- as I mentioned, the regional pathway system is being built on the south side of Ten Mile Creek, just across, which is ten feet as well. And, and that connects east to west and will connect to Franklin, and we've had a great experience working with their parks department to make sure that connectivity happens. Eventually, we're not going to be too far away, but eventually that will connect from Linda Road all the way to Franklin in, in one spot with just minimal accesses or crossings. So we're asking for your approval tonight and removal of the requirement for ten feet on the sidewalk and just let it be eight feet as we've designed it. And I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, John. What is the sidewalk connecting to, to the east in theory, an eight-foot pathway or an eight-foot sidewalk, or do we know yet?
I can just go back up right to there. Our intent on the north side of this, of the Ten Mile Creek is that we will extend or continue that eight-foot sidewalk east to west. And so even though it's not the regional pathway system, it, we will be connecting it. It doesn't exist currently. It will connect on either, it'll connect on the east end eventually to a five-foot sidewalk, which will be a road called Benchmark. And right now at Wayfinder, at that location, it's connecting as well with the eight-to-twelve foot sidewalk system, which is Wayfinder. And they say eight to twelve feet is the difference is we, we have planter boxes there as well and it necks down as it comes to the crossing, the bridge crossing. So it may be as wide as twelve, but it may be eight feet right there.
That is not connecting to a regional pathway type network that's already existing on one end or the other. It's just a sidewalk, basic sidewalk network.
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. It is not connecting to a regional pathway on either end.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
John, condition number nine states that you want us to remove the language pertaining to compliance with the design guidelines in the Ten Mile Interchange Site Area Plan and the standards in the ACM to require compliance with Ten Mile Crossing Design Guidelines as required by the DA.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt, the original language in, or the condition that was here carried over previously to the Ten Mile Interchange Specific Area Plan and its guidelines. Council recently acted and adopted guidelines specific to Ten Mile Crossing. We're just asking that our guideline or our approval be consistent with the new set of design guidelines you just previously adopted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
One curious question on the, the condition eight, the public easement versus eliminating that requirement. What, what's the practical consequence of removing that condition?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, the practical consequence is the city doesn't intend to have a regional pathway system on the north side of the creek. That regional pathway system is on the south side of the creek and we have that easement in place for that. So the reason that we're asking that it not be there is it just doesn't connect to anything the city would deem to be part of their, their system. That's on the south side. So that's the reason we asked for that one to be stricken as well.
Doesn't, it didn't change the impact or access, quite frankly. People would, someone's going to walk on it, they might just walk on it, whether they live there or not.
That is correct. Yes.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Can you share with us, because I anticipate seeing this more and more, the desire to have the smaller private, private open space for each unit? Is this a, is this a design feature? Is this, help, help me understand what the downside would be to meeting that standard in addition to having the public open space?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, it's a great question. This is a request we made with our other two phases as well, so it's a, it's consistent. Where it really comes into play is on the studios. Some of these studios, the, the space that they would have as quote "private" is really minimized. It, a studio is really nothing more than just a small kitchen area and a bedroom integrated. We've offset that, even though we're asking for less, maybe perhaps private space for them. The amenity package for the overall project is such that we have a lot of open space in the community. You know, all of these units, for the most part, are opening up to the creek, and so we've just asked for that to be, the trade-off there of asking for less private space is more inclusive in the entire project, included in the entire project, I should say. So is it a trend we're seeing? It definitely is. But where we're trying to use that are on the smaller units, where we're really talking about probably one resident, maybe one and a half residents. And I say one and a half is that, you know, we have individuals that are only living here part-time and may not be here full-time. And so these smaller units don't necessarily need that open space requirement. It is, that is a standard that, the requirement is, has been part of the city's UDC for some time, and I do see that, you know, there will be requests for this, but I think we need to be able to show that we are offsetting that with other amenities. And I think the amenities that are included here in the Ten Mile Creek Apartments Phase Three are fairly substantial.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Pro.
Is the intention to encourage a resident to use the public open space, or is it actually a challenge in designing, designing balconies that because of how the, the actual structure is designed, that would accommodate the, the code requirement? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, we have, we, we've researched this a lot. We've done a lot of projects. We, we, our team is very well-versed on, on the dynamics of, of the space that's needed. We, we didn't go into this saying, well, how can we maximize all the space yet minimize the open space for each unit? What we, what we did look at, however, is the type of lifestyle and the type of demographic of individuals, you know, moving moving into these studios and one-bedroom units. And perhaps that open space that would be required by UDC may be more than really what is needed. You know, we see this with, with parking as well. Three-bedroom units, they need a lot of parking because they do generate a lot of cars, given the nature of those. But the smaller units, the, the loading on those for parking is much less. It's very similar with the open space requirement, the private open space. So the trade-off for us was the, the private open space may not be as critical for them, but they do need to have places to go. And that is encompassed in the overall amenity package.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone set up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. If there's anybody in the room that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item, please do so now. Or if you're online and would like to testify, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of Zoom and we will bring you in. Seeing no one online or in the room that'd like to provide testimony with the applicant, like to make any final comments? Okay. Applicant is suggesting they would not like to make any final comments. So counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Ask the applicant, applicant a question. Anyway. So, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, it's a great-looking project. And and the explanations for the, the changes in the, the requested conditions made sense. Sound reasoning to make those changes. One of the questions while I, while I had you is among the features in this is that live-work component. I know it's a small piece, but it's a really cool piece. Because you develop these types of projects, you have a sense of why we don't see more of that type of development? Is it really hard to find a user that wants that? Pretty rare that we see it and it's such a cool element. Just thought I'd pick your brain real quick and.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, thank you for the question. Honestly, it, it's something we have researched a lot. And we've even looked here in, in the city of Meridian at, at other examples where they have come on board. They, they are difficult. They are definitely difficult to get that right mix of a user who is running their own business and willing to live upstairs as well. We, we think there is a market for it. We don't know that there is a very deep market for it. There, there's an example right now over by Dix and Coles. And they have some of those retail spaces down below. They're not true live-work units, but they are, they do have that component and they're sitting vacant right now. I, I think it will mature. I think there will be opportunities for us to see more of that. But our team actually has experience in, in the heart of Los Angeles with live-work units that sat vacant for years. And so that's not so much of, I think it just, it's, it's hard to find the right users to make that work. We didn't want just to throw it away and lose the opportunity. That's why we're putting out that opportunity to do a couple of them. Some may say we should do more, but there's a risk. There's a risk that they, they may not be used for that. And we'll be sitting on some spaces there that, that just can't, can't be rented for the, or the work part of that. We, we would like to see it work. I, we're excited to see downtown here where you have a, a concentration of, of a lot of people who are here from a daytime operation. I think over time we'll have more of that at Ten Mile as well, but we just don't, we're just not there yet.
I appreciate that. What I hear you saying, and, and I appreciate this as well, is it's a long game, kind of playing the long game. And, and you think if it might be challenging in the short term, you think it's a long-term successful piece of the puzzle? For this, and I, I just appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, we hope so. We hope that there, it, it can prove to be successful. Here, we just haven't seen it play out yet. It might change. The, the living part of this won't have any, any challenges. I mean, we're just seeing that there, there is a need desperately for rentals that offer people short and long-term. The, the work piece of it is just a little bit different on just having enough space that, and the right person who can have their business there and live there as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Kick off some emotion and some discussion. This one. See how this moves along. I'll start by moving to close the public hearing on H20210035.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll favor sing that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Kind of a precursor to a motion, I thought, and I hinted at it. That the applicant made a good reason, explanation for the amendments to the pathway width from, from 10 to eight feet. But that made sense in light of the topography that's presented, in light of the fact that it's private, not public, and the 10-foot public pathways on the south side available for public use. So going eight feet seemed to be warranted and also eliminating condition eight, which speaks to the, the removal of the public easement made sense. The final one is, is condition number nine to ensure that the design guidelines are those within the 10-mile crossing design and the DA provision, which we approved before. The applicant commented on it. This seems to be best suited to be consistent with that, so. All in all, I'm supportive of the application as presented, as well as for the changes in those three conditions of approval. There hasn't been public comment of concern. This is where this type of densities anticipated to grow, and I appreciate the applicant's desire to try and give a live-work option and hopefully that takes off at some point, so. Those are my thoughts on it. I'm definitely supportive of this application.
Anyone in opposition to what Mr. Borton described that would like to engage on that topic? Any of those? Hopefully that will help you make a motion, Councilman Borton.
Moving that we approve, item H20210035 as presented in the staff report of August 10th, 2021 for the rezone and the CUP with changes to conditions of approval for H that would allow the pathway along the southern portion of the project to be eight feet versus 10 feet. The removal of condition eight, that would have that same pathway be private. There's not a public easement required for it. And either the removal or edit to condition number nine to ensure that this application is developed consistent with the 10-mile crossing design guidelines set forth in the DA as opposed to the 10-mile specific area plan, design guidelines. Yeah, I think that covered it.
Second, maybe a quick question.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion, Councilman Cavan?
Councilman Borton, I want to make sure I heard you right. I think on number eight, did you say north and meant south? Did you say south and meant north? I don't know if staff caught that. Maybe I misheard you.
Mr. Mayor, south of the project, north of the, of the creek, but it's on the south, southern project.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Borton.
Aye.
Cavan. Bro.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries and the item is agreed to. Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is item three, which is public hearing for Woodcrest Townhomes, H2021-0015. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment and a rezone. This site consists of 1.97 acres of land. It's owned LO Limited Office and located at 1789 North Hickory Way, north of East Fairview Avenue on the southwest side of Hickory Way. This property was annexed with LO zoning in 1992 and later re-subdivided as a lot in Mulane Commercial Complex in 2001. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is commercial. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan future land use map to change the land use designation on 2.1 acres of land from commercial to medium-high density residential as shown on the left and a rezone of 2.1 acres of land from the LO Limited Office to the R15 Medium High Density Residential Zoning District. Approval of the map amendment will allow the applicant to develop 19 single-family residential attached and detached, excuse me, attached and townhome dwellings. I got this a little sidetracked here. It looks like this is an old version of my presentation, so ignore the exhibit there on the left. The right one is the current one. The gross density is proposed as 10.8 units per acre on this infill property, which will contribute to the range of residential land use designations and diversity in housing types and densities in this area and provide a transition in land uses from medium-density residential to commercial and office uses. A revised concept plan, as I mentioned, shown on the right, and building elevations were submitted showing how the property is planned to develop with 19 single-family attached and townhouse dwellings consisting of one, single-family attached structure, three, three-unit townhouses and two, four-unit townhouses and a common area with a pathway and gazebo amenities. Because the site is below five acres in size, minimum qualified open space and site amenities are not required. This property is planned to be subdivided through a future application. Access to the site is proposed via a cross-access easement from an existing driveway from North Hickory Way, a collector's street. No stub streets exist to this property. A private street is planned to provide access to the proposed development and for addressing purposes. An attached sidewalk is proposed along one side of the private street for pedestrian access. Off-street parking is proposed in accord with UDC standards. Four extra spaces are proposed for guest parking in the common area near the entry and five spaces are proposed in the common area at the southeast corner of the site. On-street parking is not allowed due to the width of the private street. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed residential structures with a mix of materials consisting of horizontal wood siding, vertical board and batten siding, wood shake siding and cement plaster with stone veneer accents and architectural asphalt roofing. Commission did recommend approval of these applications. Blaine Walmer, the applicant represented, testified in favor, along with Louis Mulane. No one testified in opposition. There were a few folks that commented as follows: Dave McDonald, Shirley Moon, Randy Nelson and Ann Atarian. No written testimony was submitted. Key issues of discussion are as follows: Traffic and safety concerns on Hickory Way, lack of visibility of cars pulling out onto Hickory Way from the site due to the curve of the road, maintenance of the existing masonry wall and landscape strip along the north boundary of the site, and inadequacy of parking in this area. Louis' Restaurant and the Bank patrons currently park on this property. Key issues of discussion by the commission. They were in favor of the proposed development plan over previous plans for this site. They did have some concerns pertaining to safety of access onto Hickory Way and preference for the four-unit townhome proposed along the north boundary to be reduced to a two- or a three-unit townhouse for better transition to the existing homes to the north. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation and there are no outstanding issues for counsel tonight. There has been no written testimony submitted since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Blaine Walmer. Walmer Engineering. We're located at 4355 West Emerald in Boise. We're representing the applicant on this project this evening and we're glad to be before you for this consideration. We have reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval with our client and we concur with both. There is one little housekeeping item that Sonya's probably already picked up on, but on page 19, number one, the development agreement refers to an annexation before the annexation is final, that the development agreement should be in place. And I believe that probably needs to be the zoning ordinance before the zoning ordinance is in place. Other than that, this evening, we're just here to answer any questions that the council may have as well as the public.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holdon.
Walmer, just wanted to follow up, Ms. Redd, through the planning zoning minutes. There was concern expressed about traffic safety and pulling out. And it sounded like there was actually going to be taken by this development to make that as a berm or some other things that were in play.
There, there is an existing berm there and there's quite a few trees that are planted along that berm. We have done quite a bit of field reconnaissance out there, trying to figure out what we have in the way of site distance, if there's any issues. Visually, we don't see any right now, but we, when we do the preliminary plat, we'll be happy to provide a site distance exhibit that shows that we can meet the ACHD standards. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Walmer. Sell me on the idea of, of changing the zoning in this area to accommodate what you're proposing. And the reason I ask that question is, as a council and especially myself, I, I, we always, at least I always, I should speak for myself only, I apologize. What I always, what, what I struggle with is, is taking a, a commercial-type zoning and making it residential, knowing what's going on in our market and, and, you know, the balance between commercial versus residential. And so you need to sell me on why I need to do that.
Mr. Councilman, the, most city councils are loath to do such a thing. I get it. I do get it. The property has been in its current state with a general, with a commercial comp plan designation and a, and a light office zoning for 26 years. It's been marketed for 26 years. Its location behind Louis' that doesn't have any frontage onto Fairview and it, it just doesn't have the commercial appeal of, for that type of use. And basically what we're finding is that it, it, it's a better, it's better situated for a transitional use from the commercial along Fairview into the single-family residential that's north of Hickory and northwest of the, of the property itself. So I, I think probably the best case we can make is it's been on the market for 26 years and there is no commercial viability for this property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
So what about like something, you know, light office, like a dentist's office or some type of medical use or something in that regard that doesn't really require, it's more of a destination, location as opposed to something retail or restaurant-oriented?
Councilmember, that's, that's also been on the table as far as its use because that's its own, is light office.
Yeah.
And the, the owner of the property who owns Louis' Restaurant has put great effort into trying to get this property sold. Excuse me. He would definitely, at, at his advancing ages, he'd like to be beyond this property and, and he's, he's tried. And he just doesn't find any interest in light office, any interest in commercial. And again, I think it has everything to do with its proximity and its lack of frontage on, on Fairview. So what we tried to do is create a balance, again, a, a transition of, of a townhome density. It's a 10.8 dwelling units to the acre density from the commercial uses to a, a, a single-family residential to the north and northwest.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Along those lines, maybe talk counsel through why the choice to go for a medium-high zoning as opposed to like a, a mixed-use neighborhood? Like a mixed-use neighborhood might kind of blend what, I think what's been envisioned by council would also give you some more flexibility to do some, some residential. So talk us through why, why you're seeking this particular designation.
Well, I, I, I believe my client just saw it as an opportunity for, for townhomes. This is, they, they built these before. They saw it as a nice opportunity as far as its location. And then again, it being a transitional zone between the two uses, they didn't really give mixed-use much thought. Much thought. They, they, they basically had the, the townhome project adjacent to the commercial. It's not that far from the village. There's, there's, there's certainly. It's certainly walkable. So the residential seems to be. That density residential seemed to be the best use for the property.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Blaine, my assumption is, is should you be granted this rezone that you guys would move. Really aggressively then and getting your plat in and having development commence? Or is it? Get the zoning and then wait to see what the market dictates in terms of, of building it out?
No, that, that's, that's another reason the townhomes are being proposed. The market is here now for that. And my client's direction to us is. Should we be fortunate enough to get approval tonight to move quickly forward with the preliminary plat, possibly starting final engineering as well?
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Corcoran, we have anybody sent to provide testimony on this item?
On this, remember we had three people sign in, only one marked they want to testify. Others might, but that's Dave McDonald.
And if there's anybody online that's likely to provide testimony on this item, please use your, raise your hand function. So that we can make sure bring you in. You say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Dave McDonald, two five seven nine East Grapewood. I appreciate your time and I also recognize a few of you from the previous. Thing where we had a melee going on almost till midnight. Appreciate your thoughtful comments. Here and now, and, and just like Councilman Burton said, you know, obviously the preference would have been, you know, dental offices. You know, single level adjacent to my home. I share. This microphone seems dead, but I share a hundred and twenty feet of the two hundred and fifty-seven feet shared border to this property. So. It literally is in my backyard. Biggest questions and some of you remember comments, the density was an issue last time. Some of the same issues still exist here. I mean, I know. Parking and traffic was a looming concept. I believe. Staff does have. Guess a vicinity plan on page two. It shows a little bit more of the, the street design, concept plan. Is great. There's a lot of positive things, but there still are some of the same issues, how big, how close. And one, one issue I went out to investigate myself over the weekend was with regards to the four unit. Townhome that's right in the middle adjacent to our property. And there was comment in Z about would that be broken up? I want to add an additional one. Could it be moved to the southernmost? Lots away from our property line. Cause it, I did go look at townhomes with a very similar look and it does loom large. Over your back bands. I believe Blaine Walmer has been very adept at solving some of the, the challenges and problems with the site. And there are many positive things. I think there are still some pending issues. One of the things that stood out to me when I, I looked at a similar townhome. With four units like this and three units and two units, et cetera. Was no parking on the private drive. So it spilled over and because of the, the traffic and. You know, I looked at the traffic counts, we tend to loom right around four thousand, just barely above the minimum thresholds for a collector. And one of the comments that was made by. By the previous discussion on this property a few years ago, and some of you may remember that was no parking on that collector. That was the one thing that really stood out to me. There's estimated to be approximately fifteen school age kids my, on my way here. I had to come out and around a. Some sort of construction truck with. Trailer on there that was parked there and you wouldn't want kids zooming out on Hickory speeds there. So, you know, I do appreciate your thoughtful comments and would like to see if you and or Mr. Walmer. Have some solutions to the parking. You know, there are some additional concerns, but the parking is one and also the setbacks and the utility easements. A lot of us rely on high speed internet for working from home. I understand there's some possible modifications to that. In a general sense, I am supportive of this plan, even though I share some of the same issues at a lower density. As the previous project, just as it has been sitting in for so long.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
One question for you while you're looking on the, the. Map on the screen there, the P and Z was referencing a request or their, their hope that the northern. Unit would be two or three instead of four.
Well, there's all, the, the first two units are, you know, fairly large. I mean, the three unit one. Is on the side of my property, the four unit one would be. The one most visible from my backyard. You know, there were some questions, you know, can we shift the unit? I don't think anybody asked about, and we just take that four unit one and slam it all the way to the four southernmost lot. So it's. That, that, that might be one thing, but I've been impressed with Mr. Walmer and his ability to solve some of the challenges. Traffic par- parking cross access might be solved by some of the. Recent developments from ACHD about traffic exiting out of Louis out onto. Airview instead of using the light. Solution. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Mr. Corcoran, bails.
That was all that indicated they wished to testify.
If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony, like to come forward and. The comments at the sun. Say your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Brian Abbott and my address is eighteen fifty-five East Shamir Drive in Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four six. My concern, Mr. Mayor, is if I recall that land, it seems like it's being subdivided a little bit, like they're parceling out. This land tends to go in a odd shape around back of the.
Talking to Mike.
Is it the whole section that goes all, is it the whole L shape?
Yeah, we'll let the, let, let staff answer that or they can come up at their time.
And then on the egress to Hickory, there's. Another subdivision to the north, Solera or Solterra, I believe. And I, I'm not sure the proximity of the two egresses there. Cause it's because of that, Solterra's on the curve to the north. It's not a real good sight line of sight, turning left onto Hickory from Solterra, if that's the name of that street. So it'd be, I'd be curious to know the juxtaposition of the two drives.
Yeah, I might have a follow up. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
You're good. Thank you.
Is there anybody else like write testimony at this time? Would the applicant like to come forward for any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again for the record, Blaine Walmer, Walmer Engineering. In response to Mr. McDonald of, of a couple of his questions, he initially asked what the separation from the property line, the existing block wall, his rear property line. From the back of our proposed unit, it's approximately thirty feet is what we have shown right now. There, there was discussion of traffic. In fact, at our neighborhood meeting that, that came up. The one thing we wanted to make sure that the planning commission, planning and zoning commission knew as well as the council here is. We did look into that with a traffic engineering consulting firm that we deal with all the time. And asked them to make a quick comparison for us based on the number of units we were proposing and what light office might have provided. And we found out that the traffic counts are about sixty-five percent of what light office would have been. So this is actually a, from a traffic impact standpoint, it's, it's a better way to go. Parking was brought up. These units, as it states in this, in the staff report are all self parking. They have garages and they also have parking in front of the garages. As well as the additional site parking that we've provided in the landscape area and, and the common area as well. With respect to Mr. Abbott's comments. The, the property does not wrap around Louis. The property is directly behind Louis. It consists of two point one acres gross. So there is, th- this property has no frontage on, on Fairview whatsoever. And the, the, the Solterra, I'm sorry, I mean, Solterra, Solterra, probably still not saying it right, but. That those two drive, their driveway to their development in our proposed driveway, our existing driveway that will be utilizing lineup. So there's, there's no conflicting traffic movements there. So I hope I've addressed their concerns adequately and again, happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Two additional questions. So if I, I'm seeing this right, then. If this is developed, the owners of these particular. Units would essentially be exiting onto Hickory or going kind of around the strip mall to get onto Fairview, utilizing. The current Louis parking lot. Is that accurate or is there? Zone.
Well, unless I'm not understanding your question, the, the main access to the project would be the Hickory driveway that is existing.
That where you enter into Louis.
If you're entering into Louis from the back, th- this is off of Hickory, right?
Doesn't Hickory connect to Fairview?
Yes, okay, yes. I'm sorry. I may not have missed, I may not have understood. Thank you.
Just maybe one follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
To go to, I think Mr. McDonald inquired about. The size of the, of the units that are going to face his backyard. I'm, I'm certainly sympathetic to what the property owners trying to, to achieve. Likewise, I'm also sympathetic to the, the resident that's been there that has had an expectation about what was going to be developed. I, I know that we're not going to have a plat before us, but help me understand a little bit of the flavor for what. The height of, of what you plan to build those units that are adjacent to his backyard and kind of what the development plan is.
Mr. McDonald's expressed that concern as well at the planning and zoning meeting. And you're correct, we don't have a site plan nor a preliminary plat in front of you tonight. But we can certainly look at that, take his concern into account as we lay this out. And if we can accommodate with, with. Doing something else there. Height wise, these are maximum two story units. Thirty feet away, we believe that the impact would be fairly minor, but you can certainly take a look at. Coming up with maybe a different configuration, the, the private street and the lots will be the same layout, but maybe we can put. A three unit townhome there possibly. We'll take a look at it though, as we go through the process.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Or did you have a question?
Parking. The, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned that we're going to get a call from. The restaurant owner in a few years about residents parking in their parking lot. On the evenings, on a Friday and Saturday night. When the residents may be most likely to have people visiting. Taking up. Parking. Again, invite. People over for Christmas morning and you're one place and you don't have enough parking potentially for the families. And, you know, those nine additional spots.
Well, the, the, the restaurant owner, Louis was supposed to be here tonight. He was unable to make it, but he is a very strong project proponent.
I, I know he is and very, very familiar with that. That's why. And I know I'll get an earful just for making these comments. But it's, but it's, it doesn't go without, I mean, if, if we don't want people to park on Hickory. And we don't want people to park in the adjacent restaurant parking lot during. You know, this important business hours, what's the solution? For this area when nine is not enough and there will be times where nine that we know is not enough. That's, I'm not going to say it's all the time, maybe. Seven days a week or seven days a year. I don't know. But that's really the question. Is what is the, what is the parking solution for when there's not enough parking? It's going to be good for the neighborhood, the good for the streets and good for the neighboring business.
We're certainly willing to take another look at that when we prepare the preliminary plat. We've got some room down there on the south to add some parking.
That's what I was wondering if to that exact point, you know.
We're certainly willing to do that.
I understand ten, townhomes are difficult. It's actually why private streets make a little bit more sense, but it also limits. No parking typically in front, in a meaningful way. In, I, I mean, street parking.
Right.
From the simple, so.
Right side is aesthetically speaking, it's a better look, but I certainly. Understand your concern and, and we'll take that into account when we.
I just want to make sure we have happy restaurant owners, happy neighbors and happy residents. Whatever that. Works out to be.
I understand the balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question maybe for Mr. Nary. Bill, so you just got an annex, or excuse me, a rezone request before us. Appreciate what the applicant has said in terms of wanting to. Put something together, hopefully that addresses some of the neighbors' needs. If. That comes before us, those elevations don't match that. How much teeth does the council have in terms of? Dying, remanding. I, I'm worried that, you know, granted a rezone and. Blaine's doing a great job, but then wins the power ball and leaves and somebody else comes in and maybe, maybe we don't get what we had intended here tonight, just what. What strength the, the council has to. Be sympathetic to the neighbors.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, councilor, Cavanagh, the. Definitely more, much more limited. Again, the comp plan amendment is one. Piece of the teeth that you have not do this. Secondarily, the rezones obviously next. Last is just the plat. So plat is just a division of land. So that doesn't really have the same strength. I mean, you can put some conditions. But there's no development agreement here, I don't believe that we're talking about. So there's not a condition to amend or other opportunity for the council. Barely limited at that point on, on the plat.
Would you like the applicant to respond to that?
Seems, he seems enthusiastic to bring forth some information. So yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Blaine Walmer. Yes, and that, that is actually item D in our development agreement requirement. There is a development agreement required that needs to be done. Completed prior to adoption of the new zoning ordinance should you approve tonight. So. We will be putting that into the development agreement, which my understanding will indeed have the teeth, I think that you're looking for. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize for history. So he's correct. So that, those conditions can be in the DA modification or the DA. Conditions for the approval of the rezone.
Councilman Holden.
For Sonia, I, I wanted to follow up on that because when he mentioned that he's up here the first time about the DA refers to the annexation, but it. Should be changed. Is that, can you help me to understand that? It should be to the rezone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, it was just a typo in the staff report. I, I've corrected it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Board.
Follow up on Councilman Cavanagh's question. Usually the DA provisions require the plat to be consistent with the concept plan. But if there's going to be changes to this concept plan, we'll accommodate the parking solution that we don't yet have. Kind of a chicken or the egg. So I'm not sure how we would craft that provision in DA. Without seeing what the solution would be. Cause I'm missing something. The plat application would look like what's on the screen, which doesn't afford any parking solution that we're all discussing. So. If we need to put some specifics to that, it can become a DA provision. So then the plat can be consistent with that, just so eyes are wide open. And what the solution is. I don't know what it would be or how you do that right now. But now would be the time we'd have to articulate. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Is that word is substantially consistent? Oh, I, in, that, that to me is a lawyer word, you know, what, what does substantially mean? And could spend hours on that one. Cause if, if the road's not changing, if by chance the three townhomes on this side swapped with four on the other. Cause if, if the road's not changing, if by chance the three townhomes on this side swapped with four on the other side and some additional parking was added, to me that would meet the substantial requirement, but that's just my interpretation of it. I mean, how much change can be done before it's, it's not similar to what we saw tonight? I don't know if you can help Sonja or Bill on, on, on that type of question. Or Councilman Borton.
Mr. Mayor, I'll answer, at least the reason my concern came up is it could be substantially consistent with what's on the screen right now, which doesn't provide that solution. So the fear isn't that there would be a big change. The fear would be that there's little or no change. Now allows a plat to get approved. You can't deny it because it's consistent with what's in front of us. We can figure it out. We can fix it somehow.
May, maybe one suggestion would be putting in a minimum number of other parking that you would be comfortable with. I don't know if it's a number. I don't know if it's a location. You know, I've been mentally struggling with 19 units, 19 offsite or two thirds of that number. There's currently nine. Yeah, that's a number. I, I just don't know what really is a good standard when you don't have other things. It's relative.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
The challenge, I think we're, we're cautiously quiet. We're not sure how to do it up here on the dais, nor should we. I think you might be able to articulate, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, Blaine Warmer. We were just discussing the, because the, the numbers are kind of floating and what's you get, the, the council's struggling with what is the right number to make everything work? I think probably what could be written into the development agreement is an analysis by a licensed traffic engineer to do a parking analysis. That way they would be able to know because Louis is existing. They know how many tables are there. There's models for how a restaurant gets used and our project is parked 100% between garages and the, the driveways themselves, plus the additional parking we're offering. I, I think if, if the council may have, may feel a little better with having it professionally analyzed as a part of the requirement for the development agreement. Which we would be willing to have you write in. I, I just don't know any other way to do it without having someone that, that actually licensed and practices those types of analysis. So that going forward, we've got the right number of parking because at the same time, it's a waste to overpark it.
I think this kind of is part of that conversation that we've even had with other applications recently is restaurants are really busy during certain times and how does that work? I mean, for us parking agreement to allow people to park in those areas would probably solve that, but that may not be make the current or future restaurant owner happy to have residents parking. That's what I want to protect the area from is, and at least from my perspective, the non-voting person's perspective. Who actually really likes the project and thinks this makes a lot of sense. But trying to define that.
I think it's, it's one step further. It's not so much about, I think the mayor's concerned about, you know, neighbors parking in Louis' restaurant. My concern is the inverse is, you know, Louis patrons parking in front of your future residents driveways and prohibiting their access. I think those are the calls the mayor's office is going to get is on a, on an Easter Sunday or on a Wednesday when the Kiwanis and the U of I Alumni Association meets and the parking lot's already packed. They're gonna, they're gonna bleed into your neighborhood and that's not good for your residents either. So that I, I share those.
You need to disclose something that you're there every Wednesday.
Wouldn't know from looking at me, but I go to Louis every Wednesday. Yes, yes.
Well, we, we have checked and Louis currently is parked definitely within the code.
Recognize that.
Okay.
I think it's how do we keep people off of Hickory if that's a concern? Where, where, where they naturally going to push if Hickory is not the option? When you exceed the parking here, which there will be times when that occurs. Counsel, I throw it back to you on conversation, next steps appropriate is. Mr. Mary.
Members of the council, I mean, I do appreciate the applicant's suggestion of at least having a professional provide you some data or some information that's a little bit more objective. So that way we don't have a concern about it being arbitrary. I would suggest if we do that though, that make no less than what they've already presented. So if you were to get a traffic engineer that comes back and says, we only need six extra parking spaces, they could take three of them away. We don't really want that. So they could have at least the minimum of what they've shown and, but they would need to comply with whatever is proposed by a, a traffic engineer. I think that helps. I think there is cross parking already on these sites. So I think it is something that they're all going to have to deal with that. I think the bigger concern we've heard tonight though, so I don't want to make a part of the record necessarily, but I think what Councilman Cavanagh raises what we've heard before is other patrons, staff, those types of parking conflicts that you get. Again, I think if you have cross parking and they have at least an engineer telling you how much is appropriate, I think that's the best from the city's perspective we could do.
So, so Mr. Mary, you believe this entire area is, is cross parked development?
And I would have to go verify that. I, I believe the portion that came in with Louis is. I don't know if that includes the bank on the east side of the, of the drive aisles or the retail commercial lets on to the west of them. But I thought these two pieces had a cross parking between them. So. Because it wasn't anticipated they were going to be offices of some sort. If you'd like, we can certainly try to verify that before. I don't have the DA.
Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I'm certainly not against, you know, having professional look at our concerns and providing data that's objective. I, I don't have a concern with that, but just being fully transparent. Just for, you know, just to be fair to the applicant, in, in my opinion. And, and it's, I always take these rezones lightly for obvious reasons and because of the concerns that my fellow council members have discussed, whether it's parking or whether it's neighbors and having sympathy for neighbors that have lived there for a while, expecting a certain development to occur. And having that change is certainly something that we take into consideration. In my opinion, right now, I feel that this doesn't quite meet the benchmark for me to change the zoning. I'm open to the data and seeing what that looks like. That's where, that's where I'm leaning right now. And, and these decisions are tough because of the neighboring businesses that are longstanding Louis, you know, Louis has been there for a long time and it's a great restaurant. They've been a great Meridian business for a long, long time. So got to sort of take that aspect out of the decision and, and with that said, I, I, right now, I'm a little, little hesitant, just, just for transparency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Throw my comment in there, you know, it's kind of nice to have an infill development that's brought to us and you don't have all the neighborhood adamantly opposed to infill development and comments that, you know, there are things they'd like to see tweaked, but certainly aren't unhappy about, and it's the best they've seen. You know, that, that certainly helps. So I, I don't want to, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater on, on something like this. There are some issues that we have to work. This is a rezone. I appreciate council member Cavanagh's comments about, you know, asking council, what, what tools do we have to make sure things can move forward in a transparent way for what we're looking at and how it comes forth and, and and I think we might have a few tools at our disposal to, to make that happen if we were to prove this. But and then hopefully when the final plat comes for the preliminary plat, those things are, are there and we can see what, what it could be and attempt to resolve all those problems. Because I, I think if we just not do this, it's, and which we certainly can, we can leave it as is, it's, it's just going to continue to, to sit for quite a few more years and, and but you know, it's certainly something worth wrestling with and trying to figure out what, what the best path forward is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think the Planning and Zoning Commission called it the second best proposal that they could get. And I, I tend to agree with that. I, I think I, Councilmember, I struggle with the, the rezone. We're losing a lot of commercial land. I said, sat for 20 years, tried really hard to make it to go with commercial and if it just doesn't fit, I hate to be so beholden to that, that we don't, we don't open our eyes to another option. So I think I'm supportive of a rezone with a traffic or a parking study to be a condition. Potentially conditioning some height of those buildings that, that face Mr. McDonald. I think that we could, we could get there if we want to. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I, I do think it's almost ready. It really is. I'm, I'm more inclined, it's not ready today. I couldn't approve it today. But I think the problems with parking that the mayor's brought up are spot on. We know what's going to happen here. Some engineering data might help, but intuitively we've seen this challenge where even a code compliant project creates problems because it just does. What your example of what you described, want us Wednesday, it's just, you know, Louis parks on this dirt lot now. They're popular. So there's challenges there. I'm not comfortable yet that we have the solution. I don't know how to draft a language to ensure right number of parking spaces are there. I think the applicant in a week or two might be able to come up with language that gets you there, maybe. I would certainly want to know that there is a cross parking agreement recorded against both properties. That would allow these residents to be able to use the Louis lot. We can have time to verify that. So I'm not ready to move forward. I like it. I think it is kind of the next best thing. It's not quite ready yet.
Councilman Pro, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything additional to add. I, I agree with Councilman Cavanagh. I think that we can get there and I I understand the applicant struggle with bringing in a use, how it's currently dedicated in the, in the comprehensive plan. So I, I like the concept. I'd like to see if they could make something work, but I do think we need more data on the parking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Wayne, you open for another question? I think your public hearing is still open.
Public hearing is still open.
Wayne, you've heard, I think, some good conversation from the council. I think I, I tend to agree. If we could get a parking study done first, I think that would maybe address some of the concerns of council. Is that something you guys are, are willing to do on the front end as opposed to the back end and we could continue it out for a few weeks and you could bring us back those results? Also give us some time to, to further explore the, the cross agreements for parking and make sure that we're all speaking the same language.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Obviously our preference tonight would be to get approval and come back to you with the preliminary plat with that supportive study, which I think could still work because from what I'm hearing, it, it seems like this generally is, is the, is the right way to go. However, if at the same time, we would take a continuance over denial. So I guess that's probably the best way I can answer that question.
Well, maybe even this. I mean, even you've heard the feedback redoing some of the design and seeing where you could put in more parking without doing the study may also meet the needs and desires without doing a formal study. Again, I don't know from the feedback you heard, if you've even thought about what type of changes you could look at that would make sense in the short term, the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Mayor, my concern with that is that we might come back and, and find this body still has the same concern. I, I, I think if, if we're going to be continued, we would want to do that analysis. We would want to come back to you with tight numbers. And some numbers we can certainly stand behind and support. So I think that's probably the, the, the way we would handle that would be to do the study now.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Blaine, how quickly, how much time do you think you would need? Two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
Well, I'm sure we could get it done in a couple of weeks and be ready to be back to you if that, if that works with council. And your agenda.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Sir, technically the applicant has the last word, so we got to not take up, there'll probably be another opportunity at the next meeting would be my guess if we go that direction. Yes, they can. No.
One, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
So we want to keep the public hearing open then? So, uh, Mr. Mayor, we move that we continue. Item number three, Woodcrest Townhome, H dash 21, 0015 to September 21 or August 21? Real quick, Sonya, is that going to give you guys enough time? I feel like might need.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman for a parking analysis from the applicant. I believe they said a couple of weeks. It depends on if you need that the week before the council meeting on the Tuesday before. So that would really only give them a week. So keep that in mind if you'd like it ahead of time.
Odd from the applicant, if that's going to be enough time. I, I worry that it's not. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to revise my motion. We continue the public hearing for Woodcrest Townhome, H dash 2021, as 0015 to September 7.
Second, the motion, the motion, second to continue the public hearing is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying I, I oppose name, the I have it and the item is continued. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you back in September. Counsel, next item up is ordinance number 21 dash 1939, I asked clerk to read the sortions by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance related to H 2020 0127, Skybreak subdivision for annexation of a parcel of the land located in the south one half of the northwest one quarter of section four township to north range one east Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 80.461 acres more or less of land from RUT to R8 medium density residential, 43.858 acres and R15 medium high density residential 36.604 acre zoning districts in the Meridian city code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver for the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Now, so you've heard this ordinance right by title. Was there any, like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Councilman Pro.
We approve ordinance number two-one-one-nine-three-nine, the suspension of rules.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, is there a discussion? If not, this court called the rule.
We're called the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton, Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro, Hoagland.
Aye.
Burn.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Counsel, anything under future meeting topics? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second the motion, motion a second to adjourn, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.